Well, good morning and welcome to the Ben County Board of Commissioners meeting for December 19th, which is our last board meeting of the year. We'll start with introductions. I'm Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Good morning, Ms. Xana Ojero, Commissioner.
Nancy Wise, Commissioner.
Lance Cronie, County Council.
Rick Crager, Chief Finance Officer.
Stan Nelson, Bedford County Resident.
Mark Todd, M County Resident.
Illinois County President.
Mark Yeager, Benton County Resident.
Karen Tass, Republic Services.
You will chat.
Any more Republic Services?
Definitely will, Benton County Resident.
We have this.
We're reviewing Benton County Public Information.
One more.
I'm Barbara Fisher.
Eric Camilo, Board Recorder.
Welcome, and then those joining us online.
Jeff Van Arsdale, Ben County Sheriff.
James Morales, Records and Elections Director.
All right. Are there any announcements this morning? Hearing none, we'll move on to approving our agenda. Let's see, there's some slight changes in the consent calendar, and I will get to those when we at the appropriate time. And there are three public hearings that will start at 11 o'clock or shortly thereafter. Next up, comments from the public. Mark Yeager, would you come to the table and make sure the microphone is on? And when it's on, there's a little red ring up here on. And you have up to three minutes.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Mark Yeager. I'm resident of Benton County. I'm going to be reading part of you, part of my testimony this morning, and I'll hand the full testimony into the recorder. On November 28th, at your regular meeting, your Community Development Director unleashed an unprecedented assault on the character and integrity of the individuals serving on the Disposal Site Advisory Committee with unspecified and unsubstantiated allegations of threats of violence against staff and other community members. Contrary to the assertions made by the Community Development Director, at no time in any meeting or other communication did any member of the committee threaten any member of the staff. Likewise, the lack of productivity from the committee was a direct result of staff and commissioner obstruction of the committee's efforts over the objections of the DSAC members. This supposed surprise report to the board wherein member, board members feigned shock, and the chair read a prepared statement regarding the role of the advisory committees, was followed immediately by a multi-page county media release. Clearly, this was pre-planned theater. On November 29th, a former member of DSAC submitted to this board a detailed three-page rebuttal of the allegations made by the Community Development Director and asked the board to hold him accountable. I want to enter that letter into the record of this meeting. To date, no member of the board has pursued that letter's request for an investigation of the facts. Having served on dozens of boards, committees, and task forces at the national, state, and community level in my 45-year career, including several terms as a member of SWAC and DSAC, I have never been subjected to this level of staff and leadership stonewalling and manipulation. And now to have this staged performance and attempt to blame everything on the committee members, it is truly reprehensible. You need to examine the chaos you have created around this whole landfill issue. You have completely, you have been completely transparent in your intentions to approve a landfill expansion, no matter what. Those intentions began in December 2020 when your county attorney gave the staff report to the commission explaining the new, the newly negotiated 20-year franchise agreement. In my opinion, you are completely misjudging the sentiment of this community regarding your efforts to expand the dump. I hope you have a wonderful holiday season, and I probably will see you next year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up, Marge Pop. And the mic is on, so.
Thank you.
Ready to go. You have up to three minutes.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Marge Pop, and I'm a resident of the city of Corvallis. Today, I want to address the allegations Darren Nichols, Benton County Director of Community Development, made at the October 28th Board of Commissioners meeting. As you are all aware, Mr. Nichols made sweeping and derogatory accusations against members of the Disposal Site Advisory Committee. Where I come from, if you accuse somebody of something, you better be able to prove it. It is in that spirit that I ask these questions regarding direct quotations of Mr. Nichols' statements from the official Zoom transcript. At timestamp 3613, Mr. Nichols charges, "The committee has created an unsafe workspace for the public, for volunteers, and for staff." How exactly did the committee create a workspace for anyone when it was county staff who set meeting dates, registered meeting participants, developed the agenda, and exercised complete control of the Zoom process during meetings? Since at least late 2021, all SWAC/DSAC meetings have been conducted by Zoom. At 3620, committee members have dangerously misled the public. How exactly have committee members done that? The website is completely under county staff control. Some committee members have expressed their views in the media. I believe that this is their prerogative in our country. If Mr. Nichols disagrees with statements they have made, he needs to articulate those statements and express why he feels they are misleading. And he needs to explain why these statements are dangerous. To whom are they dangerous? He goes on, "The committee has ineffectively wasted public resources." First of all, ineffectively wasting resources suggests that it might be less of a problem than you might think. But perhaps Mr. Nichols meant to say they were wasting resources. What resources was the committee wasting? And how did the committee waste those resources? At 3632, "Today, I want to specifically address concerns with the committee around bullying, disinformation, threats of violence, and a chronic lack of progress." Bullying, disinformation, and chronic lack of progress are general terms. What incidents specifically is Mr. Nichols referring to? Threats of violence is quite specific and is simply false. At no time did any member of SWAC/DSAC make threats of violence to anyone. Let me skip to the incident that likely suggested this charge to Mr. Nichols.
Okay, could you wrap it up, please?
I ask your indulgence, Mr. Chair. Mr. Nichols had unlimited time to wage accusations against us. I would like a few more minutes to refute some of his charges. May I please?
Would you make it as quick as you can?
As quick as I can. Okay. So let me skip to the incident that likely suggested this charge to Mr. Nichols. This is at 4052. "On October 25th, in a public meeting and apparently acting on frustrations related to this disinformation, a member of the public verbally threatened county staff with gun violence." Here, Mr. Nichols goes on to describe an event that he mischaracterizes and appears to purposefully distort. It will take a much longer time than I have here to unpack this section completely. Suffice it to say, how does Mr. Nichols know this individual is acting on frustration of anything, let alone disinformation? Officer Kraus, the police official who responded to a call from county staff to report a threats complaint and who interviewed the member of the public mentioned above, concludes his police report by saying, "I did not develop probable cause to believe a crime occurred. This case is for documentation only." At 3736, in early 2022.
Your two minutes over already. Could you please wrap it up?
Okay, thank you. I have, well, with me, I have three more pages. So perhaps I'll come back next year. Have a good holiday season.
Can I suggest to a few other people can have another additional three minutes? So if you want to come back next time and split it up between multiple people, you can each have three minutes.
Okay, that's a good suggestion.
Our, next up is Bill Gilatley.
Good morning. I'm Bill Gilatley, 10-year resident of Corvallis. Some of you already know my long connections to Benton County and my passion for open and transparent government. I've spoken twice regarding solid waste policies, first at a meeting of the Board of Commissioners, and second at a special meeting of the task force just prior to the publishing of the now well-known thousand-page report. When I read in the GT on 12/30 that the DSAC had been suspended, or more precisely paused, I reached out to two members of the DSAC committee who I know through other organizations. I heard accounts of how Darren's impassioned descriptions of members' behavior had led to the recommendation to suspend DSAC. Of greater concern to me were accounts of remaining issues such as workplace safety at Coffin Butte, concerns about methane emissions, and satisfactory capture of runoff water. I suspect that a skilled facilitator could have intervened, responded to, and diffused any anxiety with the technical concerns. Yes, it may have been, it may have called for more engaging technical expertise, but had this taken place early, any ire or ranker among committee members may very well have been kept down to a constructive level. My interpretation, after listening to the recording of the November 28th board meeting, is that Mr. Nichols used behavior of the committees rather than conflicts about DSAC content to propose the pause. I find that extremely disappointing. I believe the root cause was missed or overlooked. I can only conclude that the breakdowns regarding DSAC content had occurred over many months. I was already aware of breakdowns and departures within SWAC prior to the issuing of the big report. Frustrations leading to those departures may have been the seeds that spread to DSAC. My review leads me to three questions. What broke down surrounding the definition of the roles and responsibilities and limitations for this advisory committee? For example, did the advisory committee know that their work, that work output would be considered, but not necessarily adopted in its entirety by the staff? Second, was it appropriate for Darren Nichols to generalize DSAC member behavior in such a strong and biased way in an obviously well-heeled statement? The next question is, given the inflammatory significance of an already investigated threat by a non-member, was it even slightly appropriate to make a debunked charge of his comments? My purpose today is to suggest that as Commissioners, you take what may be an uncomfortable step back to review the process through which you engaged Mr. Imperati. The front page of Sam's website prominently makes this statement, "Our goal is resolution, not just settlement, where the parties walk away equally unhappy." Perhaps this commission and county staff are just as unhappy as the members of DSAC. But please think this through. It's clear to me that you are now even further away from a satisfactory resolution for completion of the charge given to DSAC. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any public comment online?
I'd like to comment if I may. Thank you all for coming to speak this morning. The situation has gotten inflamed, has been this way for a while. I have a very hard time when we go over and over water that's under the bridge. Our county administrator, who's only been with us for just over two months, is actively reviewing this situation. She's spoken to at least one former DSAC member and has dates to meet with others. We are looking at the Disposal Site Advisory Committee bylaws and our other advisory committee bylaws because we recognize the fact that some of our processes are not very clear, and roles and lanes and responsibilities are not as clear as they could be. We need to change that so that we don't waste anyone's time, whether it's staff time or community members' precious time because you all very kindly and generously volunteer. So this is a pause. There's important work to be done. We don't discount the importance of methane-related issues, monitoring approaches, and other potential issues related to water quality. Those are all of importance to us, and we want to address them in the appropriate way and appropriate fora, both at DSAC and in other places, with everyone that plays a role in these situations, the situation. So please, fanning the flames doesn't help anyone. I would like to be as constructive as we can moving forward in order to address the true problems. Thanks, and happy holidays.
I also say something. I want to thank Commissioner Ojero for that very well-said sentiment, which I agree with much of it. As one Commissioner, my goal is to get DSAC back up and running and get the report that is due done. In my opinion, just things are dysfunctional, and we need to figure out how to make them functional again. I also want to say, if any, anybody in this room, if, if someone accidentally says to you, "Why don't we just put a bullet in you?" I hope you call the police. I hope you file a report, even if it's just for information. It is, I don't, that, it's bordering on victim blaming at this point. This is not directed towards you, ma'am. This is not directed towards you. I'm saying, what I'm saying, which is, which is out of order.
You, you've had your five, five minutes.
So I, I am a Commissioner, and I am saying it is not okay for anyone to say that, ever. And I would say, if someone said that to you, or you, or you, I would say the same thing. I would stand up for you, anyone in this room, and say it's not okay to have that said about you. And I will stand up for our staff and anyone. Thank you.
All right. Next up, work session, monthly health update. Is April Holland with us this morning? If not, we will move on to the consent calendar. And there's a couple of minor corrections. There's a correction. Need a little help. There's a correction on the date, and I.
Do we, can we come back to the consent calendar later, maybe? Okay.
All right. On 5.2, there's a correction to the adjournment time is, the correct time is 11:08. Public hearing number one. The resolution document will need to be updated to reflect the adoption date of 12/19/23. And public hearing number two, Republic Services rate increase. Same change, adoption, adoption date of 12/19/23. With those corrections, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent calendar is approved. All right.
A quick question. That consent calendar did include the appointment to the Community Services Consortium, Community Advisory Committee, of Sharon Thornberry.
Written here in red.
I would move that we appoint Sharon Thornberry to the Community Services Consortium, Community Action Advisory Council.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to, unless April Holland has joined us, we'll move on to new business. 7.1, in the matter of changing the name of the Board of Property Tax Appeals, BOPTA, to Property Value Appeals Board. EVAB, and increasing terms of members to two years. James Morales, are you, and there you are.
Yes, I'm here, thank you. Sorry, I decided to stay at my standing desk because my back is kind of giving me some problems when I sit. So thank you for understanding on that. So what you have before you in this packet is just strictly response to some changes that the 2023 Oregon Legislature adopted through House Bills 2037, or, let me try to give you the right numbers, 2031, and, what's the other one, 2237, yes. And so 2031 was to change the name of the Board of Property Tax Appeals to the Property Value Appeal Board. This was legislation that was requested by the county clerks due to confusion that some of our appeal petitioners experienced believing that what they're doing is appealing the amount of tax that they're paying versus the value of their property, which affect, can affect the amount of tax they pay, but doesn't always do that. So we're hoping that the name change will help to begin to build understanding that this is the Property Value Appeal Board rather than the Board of Property Tax Appeals. The other bill, House Bill 2237, was brought forward by another party, but what they, they had initially asked for a four-year term for the Property Value Appeal Board because these positions require a good deal of training in order to come up to speed on all the different ins and outs of assessment and property evaluation before they're able to really understand what they're hearing from both, both parties, whether it be the assessor's office or the appraisers that are hired by the petitioners often. And, and what we ended up going to was it's, we asked for a two-year term because that's how often they needed to take the training program that the state is required to offer at the Department of Revenue. So the bill was amended to require a two-year term for Board of Property Tax Appeal appointments, which are now going to be the Property Value Appeal Board, starting effective this year, later this year. So we're making changes to all of our documentation and our website to reflect that after, of course, this is approved, if it is. And so that's, that's what you have before you here today. If you have any questions, we're just updating the bylaws to reflect the name change and the term change.
Any questions for James?
No questions. But I would move to adopt revisions to the Board of Property Tax Appeals bylaws to reflect the name change from the Board of Property Tax Appeals to the Property Value Appeal Board and to increase the terms served by appointed board members from a one-year to a two-year term in accordance with the statutory changes adopted by the 23 legislature and House Bills 2031 and 2237.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, James, for these changes.
Thank you. Have a good day and happy holidays.
Thank you. All right. Next up, discussion regarding a resolution to support establishment of a continuum of care for the Lynn Benton Lincoln County region and registering with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in 2024.
Okay, and at one point, there was discussion that Peggy McGuire might join us, but I'm assuming she's not here. Well, I can speak to it as Chair of the Community Services Consortium right now. The staff of the Community Services Consortium has been working on pulling out of the remainder of the state rural Oregon continuum of care and becoming our own continuum of care, which is an institutional name that is devised by the Housing and Urban Development Department at the federal level. And what this will do, as we create a Lynn Benton Lincoln continuum of care, is give us more autonomy in terms of setting the approach that we take to our point-in-time count for homelessness and for applying for grants from the federal government. Because as long as we are tied to the 26 counties in the rural Oregon continuum of care, all counties had to be in agreement about grant applications and have some benefit from them. And we are very different from the remainder of the state. Most of that rural Oregon continuum of care is southern Oregon and eastern Oregon and a couple other coastal counties. And we will, as an independent entity, have much more ability to address homelessness issues as we need to here in Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties that already work very closely together on these issues. So Director Peggy McGuire has been going out to all of the local municipalities, and I think And I think has spoken before the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners. Because each of us needs to put forth a resolution approving the change to our own continuum of care and pulling out of the rural Oregon Continuum of Care. So, what we see before us today in this packet is a resolution. That basically supports establishing a continuum of care for Lynn Benton and Lincoln County Region. And supports the new continuum of care registering with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in twenty twenty-four.
Any questions? Yeah, I guess. Is there any downside to moving from the twenty-six county group to a more manageable Lynn Benton Lincoln?
The one shift that it will require is that there's one staff person shared by the rural Oregon Continuum of Care with the twenty-six counties. And at this point, we will need staffing at Community Services Consortium to, and that cost will be borne by. CSC and possibly at some point with some cost sharing by the three counties. That is not yet needed because there have sources to support the creation. And I know that the position has already been advertised at the Community Services Consortium, they're actively looking for someone to staff the. Application process and then what we'll need to do to take the next steps to become our own continuum of care. So, there are potential cost considerations, however, based on the experience of Marion and Polk Counties who recently withdrew from the rural Oregon Continuum of Care. They have been able to more than double, I think the number was triple the, the grant revenue that they've brought in. So, they've been able to cover the staff costs without any challenge because they have better ability to raise funds to address the issues that they face in their region.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Like I've said something similar before, but. We occasionally have odd. Groupings of, of counties and that don't. Service very well, so I, I think this. This makes sense and Lynn Benton Lincoln is a very familiar. And so. Makes sense to me if there's. No other questions. Because we have a resolution to approve.
I would move that we approve resolution number R twenty twenty-three dash zero two eight, supporting the establishment of a continuum of care for Lynn Benton and Lincoln Counties. Registering said. Unit with the Department of Housing and Urban Development in twenty twenty-four.
All in favor of the resolution, say aye.
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 Resolution is approved. One more call for April Holland this time.
Mr. Chair, I haven't been able to get a hold of her yet, I'm continuing to try, so.
Okay.
What happened, but I'll continue to try.
The only other thing we have on the agenda. Is other, is there any other business that we need to take care of at, at this time? If not, I will recess. Our board meeting. Until eleven o'clock where we will. Have three public hearings. First one regarding supplemental budget. Second. Regarding solid waste collection, annual rate increase requests and third. Continuation of the December fifth twenty twenty-three public hearing regarding amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter nine exotic animal ordinance. We're in recess till eleven o'clock where we will deal with the three public hearings. Matter regarding. In the matter regarding supplemental budget two four zero six zero one. In Ambule and Rick Gregor.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
And this is a continuation of our work session.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, as again, we're, we're here today for our first budget supplement for twenty-three twenty-five. And I won't go through all of the specifics that we went through last time in the presentation, I'll just provide you more of a overview. And referring to page thirty-four of your packet is where the resolution begins. And of note, as, as the Chair brought up earlier, I do want to point out on page thirty-five. The date should be adopted the nineteenth of December, not the fifth of December. So, obviously, as in terms of any. Recommendation that you make for approval, we want to just make sure that note that it should be the nineteenth of December. So, just real quickly, and Erica's kind enough to bring up for us the page. I should say page thirty, page thirty-six of, of your packet. So, we are requesting a budget adjustment of seventeen point four three million for the biennium. Again, I had provided you a overview last time around, this particular depiction of it is just giving you idea of the departments. As you all know, we did our budget a little bit different and may give you a lot of. A view of the department level on how each department budget is getting impacted. Clearly, you can see here the non-departmental is the largest, and again, this is related to our capital adjustments that we had made last time around. The second page, if you could. Jen's flip for me, this is specifically to the appropriate or the fund level, which you all know, we have our various funds. And you can see where the, the, the largest changes are at, and that again is in the, on three oh three, our building development dollars. This is for all of our capital projects related to the courthouse, crisis center, emergency operations center, that's where we're housing all that. So, again, those are the, the significant changes that we are making or requesting for this particular supplement. So, just again, in a real quick review for you of the seventeen point four million dollars that we're changing in this budget, again, two point six million dollars of this is related to. And some of the adjustments that need to be made primarily because of ordering supplies, vehicles not coming in timely. Just from a supply chain order, and so we've had to actually acquire those this biennium or pay for those this biennium. So, we've had a, a larger increase in that both internal and external fleet operation. So, that was approximately two point six million of that. In addition, we had about a two point four million dollar increase related to a new grant that we've gotten from Oregon Housing and Community Services. Specifically for. Rehousing and initiatives that I know you all have been hearing a lot from Rebecca and April over the last few weeks. So, that was an unanticipated grant. We also, as mentioned last time, had an additional four hundred and seventy-five thousand increase for the Bazell Trust Fund. These were harvesting of timber that was not planned for specifically. So, again, some of those dollars will be mobilized by the NAEP Department for some of the new parking, heating systems, other maintenance type issues. And then the rest would be put into operating contingency. We had a small adjustment, and again, just to point out, I was incorrect last time. Hundred thousand dollars, that was additional from the Corvallis Rural Fire District for our evacuation routes. Again, that was a contribution that we didn't include into the budget, that was part of helping not only the recent sheep farm access road. But as well as some additional ones. And then the rest of that adjustment was specifically for carryover dollars that weren't spent last biennium that were moved forward. And then we had some very small adjustments in our general and trust fund of about a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars specifically for just again. Grants as well as some revenues that were carrying over that we wanted to be able to plan. For, for this particular biennium. And then lastly, the big, the big aspect of this was the eleven point six million dollars in our capital fund specifically for the crisis center, as I'd already mentioned. Some unanticipated cost increases, particularly on the environmental side that we're working to mitigate. Emergency Operations Center, again, as you recall, we didn't have all of that component in the, in the budget. We needed to account for the additional legislative dollars that had come in. But all in all, about a eight point eight million dollar project budget for the Emergency Operations Center. And then finally, the courthouse project, which has been, you know, as you all know, we've had a lot of adjustments around that. But in total for this biennium, about a seventy-six point nine million dollar outlay is, is where we're at. So, again, this was just truing up to the actual estimates that we have. And then finally, we had some adjustments in relation to the legislative, not only the addition of the emergency operation, but we also had. Dollars in for the navigation center, which unfortunately did not pass during the legislature, so we were taking that out. So, all in all, that was about eleven point five million dollar adjustment. And that again is the summary of our, our request today. So, and sorry to speed through that, but I just wanted to give you just a quick overview of what we talked about last time. Any questions?
If there's no questions, I will ask, are, are there any members of the public that wish to comment at, at this time? Anybody? I don't hear any members of the public who wish to testify at this time, so I'll close the public hearing. We will now. Diliterate.
I'd be happy to move to adopt resolution R two zero two-three dash zero two-four in the matter of supplemental budget two four zero six one. With the correction to the effective date to nineteenth of December.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, well, thank you, and. Bringing us mostly good news on our budget.
We, we will do our best, Commissioners, and just there are some coming attractions for you. As we see in the budget world, you get done with one budget and you start with the next one, and certainly that, that is no different with supplements as well. Our next budget supplement will probably be somewhere in the spring, will be probably a pretty large one specifically to the community health centers. As you know, we've been working on a revision of that budget, and that's work that we're hoping to come back and report to you in January. But eventually, it will turn into a, a reshot budget that we will want to get in line as close as we can. So, that's just to give you some previews, obviously, we'll have a bunch of other fun little things that will come up between now and then, but that'll be the highlight. So, thank you for your time today and approving this.
Thank you. All right, next up is public hearing number two. And that's a continuation of our November twenty-eighth twenty twenty-three public hearing regarding solid waste collection annual rate increase request. I will open the public hearing and hear from staff Darren Nichols.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners, for continuing this hearing from last time. You recall that we weren't quite prepared to present to you on the twenty-eighth, so my apologies for that. You also see that Daniel Reddick's name is listed, just a reminder that Daniel Reddick is no longer with Benton County, resigned the day after our previous hearing. So, you get me, and I'll do my best. I see that we have representatives from Republic Services in the audience, and I think they're prepared to, to present and answer questions, which you had asked for last time. So, I'm going to make the staff overview fairly brief so that you can ask questions of the folks from Republic Services. So, under Benton County's code, chapter twenty-three. We have a process for setting the refuse collection rates for Benton County. And for the last ten years or so, we've operated under a previous board order that your predecessors adopted in two thousand and thirteen. Which allowed Republic Services to come back with an annual. Request for rate increase unilaterally. That the board order, however, that set that provision in place expired with the board's adoption of a new franchise agreement. So, under the terms of the order itself, it automatically expired on December thirty-first two thousand and twenty. So, we're now back to you under the process that's laid out in chapter twenty-three. So, if you look at section twenty-three, five, ten, it lays out an eight-step process for changing the rates. And so, we're back to you now with a, basically a brand-new proposal to adopt a new order and set new rates for, for. Waste hauling collection in Benton County. Couple of other things to be aware of. We received attachment one, which I think is on page fifty-nine of your packet, I apologize. Anyway, attachment one with, that has the, the request. To increase the rates. On October ninth, we then received the actual rates themselves on October nineteenth. Under the terms of chapter twenty-three, that the hauling, the hauler, the franchisee is required to provide their requested rate increase ninety days before those, the rates can take effect. And the board is required to make. A decision at least thirty days before the rates take effect. So. I just want to flag that because the order they have in front of you, those, the implementing dates, if you were to make a decision today, those implementing dates would need to bump back just a little bit, I think, to January twentieth. So, I just want to acknowledge that before we go forward. Also want to flag. Again, for you, something that Daniel highlighted in his, in his report. He mentioned that there's, there's an incentive built in the current rate structure that basically. Rewards consumers to produce more waste, if you will. It costs less per gallon for a thirty-two gallon cart than it does for a twenty gallon, for instance. So, I just did some quick math on that. Twenty gallon cart, the move from a twenty gallon cart to a thirty-two gallon cart is a sixty percent increase in the airspace of a cart. But that only, under the current rate structure, only requires a seven percent increase in the, the charge. And if you look at it on a per gallon rate, the rate actually drops about thirty-three percent from two dollars and forty-two cents a gallon for a twenty gallon cart. To a dollar sixty-two per gallon for a thirty-two gallon cart. So. Daniel, I appreciate Daniel taking the time to look through that and flag that issue for you all. I think that's probably something you may want to ask Republic Services about this morning. But we, we don't want to be incentivizing the production of additional waste if we can help it. And so, wanted to flag that. So, I'm happy to answer questions if you have them for me this morning, otherwise I'd urge you to direct your questions to Republic Services.
Any questions for Darren?
One question, the other, in the, under our code. We also typically would have had annual report from Republic Services prior to this time. And as I understand it, that report is not scheduled to be presented to us until January. In past years, it's typically been in September or October.
Thank you, Krista Rose, that is correct. Ordinarily, you would have received the annual report sometime in the spring. I think because Benton County Talks Trash and those recommendations were still in the works. That presentation was just delayed. But we have not received it yet, we're looking at dates in January for that report to be delivered. I think you're probably referring to. Chapter twenty-three, section five, ten. Either section five or. I'm just not laying my eyes on it right now, but there is definitely a provision here that requires, that the board can require the annual report and any other information you need in order to make the decision we're asking you to make today.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I know that the report has usually been delivered in spring and has gone to our advisory committees, and then it's only been presented to the board in the fall. But yes, this was not a typical year.
Okay, I need a little advice, man. Folks from Republic come up next. Yep, you're on.
Good morning. I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. I apologize again for not being here at the last meeting. We had a bit of a communication glitch, but again, I apologize for that one. So I wanted to talk to add a little bit more information about rate adjustments over the past, really about 15 years. So in 14, we began working with staff, Gordon Brown at that time, to talk about an indexed method to adjust rates. And the reason for that was if I look back, just, I just did a quick look back, beginning in 2005, about every two years, we would, two to three years, but pretty close to two, we would come in and those rate increases based on that larger rate review process were seven to nine percent during that period of time from between 2005 and 2013, the last one being nine percent in 2013. We, and I think staff agreed, and I think the commissioners at that time agreed that there was probably a better method to do that. And so we adopted this refuse rate index adjustment method. So for the past 10 years, we've been using an indexed method and the average rate increase has been 2.9% per year. So we think that that is a more predictable and consistent way for customers to get that. And anecdotally, we find that our customers do like that better. In, we were, I'm just going to say unaware that that refuse rate order expired. And actually, in, when we signed the new hauling agreement in June of 2022, we submitted in the fall of 2022, a refuse rate agreement packet that was, that was approved and went through. So the rate increase for 2023 is reflective of that refuse rate still, even though it had expired. So we have some, some, I think, obstacles to work through. We are here to ask you how you'd like us to proceed. We understand that, that the order has expired. And we can, we can do a full rate review. We can bring you more information. Our preference would be to use the refuse rate again and then work with staff and bring back some options to the commissioners about how you'd like to go forward in the future. So, so that's kind of where we are. We can have that material put together pretty quickly, but we'd like to hear from you and understand what you'd like us to do.
I would, I think the refuse rate index makes sense. I think it provides predictability and known data in order to be able to calculate it. It has led to stability and predictability and rate increases. And I think that it makes sense to take that approach this time around as well, and then to have staff work with Republic staff to either renew the old agreement or to come up with a different approach if that's what's desired. I do, however, not want to see that incentivization of generating more waste. I don't like that. And so I do think that a larger volume can should cost more rather than less per gallon in order to incentivize people to use their composting cans more and recycle more and generate less waste in general. So I'd like to say that. I would have loved to have seen a typical annual report and all of that process before now. And, and as I mentioned earlier this morning, I have other concerns as well, but they do not pertain to the hauling franchise and the waste and the service that you provide to our community members for disposing of waste. So at this point, I will leave some of those other environmental issues off to the side and I will definitely raise those again at another point in time.
A couple of comments on the incentivizing smaller can or cart sizes. One of the things that I think that doesn't take into account is one single person who has a 20 gallon cart, for example, may produce more waste per capita than a family of four who has a 90 gallon cart or a family of five or six people who have a 90 gallon cart. So it's difficult to regulate how much waste a person makes. But I know that there are pros and cons for each system. And of course, we will do what you would like to do. If you want to incentivize smaller cart use, that works for us. Another thing to keep in mind is that, as you know, over the last couple of years, recycling, we've really highlighted the fact that recycling and yard debris costs more to process than does solid waste. So those folks who are using, let's say, a 20 gallon garbage cart might be producing more recycling and yard debris. If you want to in, in create an incentive to produce less waste, because that's really the environmental model, that's, you know, we all know, that's what we have to get to. We've all got to produce less waste. It's not just moving it from one can to another, but producing less overall. And that's the goal. And so that's really the pro, I think, for incentivizing a rate for smaller carts. So lots of information out there and we can gather some more for you if you'd like to start talking with staff about it. But our, our goal is to do what Benton County would like to do in that regard.
So on the, on the issue of incentivizing larger or smaller bins, do you know, I would be interested in seeing if there is any documentation or metrics that demonstrate that, that it actually has an impact on the amount of garbage that people produce? I don't know if you guys have that?
Well, we can glean some information from the city of Portland because as you probably know, about, about 10 or so years ago, a little bit more maybe, they went to every other week trash service and up to their recycling and yard debris to weekly in an intent to do just that. I know initially, they saw a lot more contamination in their recycling because people didn't have room in their trash carts, but have people sort of leveled out and figured out how to produce less waste? I'm not sure what those results are, but we, we have an opportunity to have some close to home information on that and we will definitely dig into that for you.
Sure. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
You know, if the answer is yes, that demonstrates, you know, that it has a real impact, that I'm all for doing it. If it, if it doesn't actually make a difference, then I hesitate to raise rates on our constituents, you know? So do you know if, do we currently have that incentivization now or this is a new thing?
We don't.
Okay.
And, and I believe the city of Portland subsidizes lower cart rates by higher cart rates. So in, in fact, people who have a larger cart pay more per gallon.
Okay. That's what I would like to see. Yeah.
I, I guess I would like to see that if there's documentation that it actually has an impact. I mean, it sounds good. I just would like to, you know, before we jump in and do that.
We were pretty closely with DEQ, especially this time of year when we start reporting recycling and yard debris and waste recovery numbers. And so those folks have a pretty good handle on how this all works and we'll gather some information from David Alloway as well.
And, and we do this yearly, right? This is an annual rate. So I mean, if we were to go with the incentivization and then decide not to next year, we could make that decision or vice versa.
Absolutely.
And of course, we're also trying to, we're undertaking our sustainable materials management plan process. And so, you know, that might be an aspect that we could, you know, incorporate in that and that might direct us in the future. I don't know. And then I have a couple of other questions if, if there's no more questions on that topic. Have you met with all the other jurisdictions, like the cities, Corvallis and Fullmouth and all that?
Yes.
Do you, so, and they all raised their rates? Do you know how much each city?
Corvallis has a little, we work with a refuse rate in almost every jurisdiction in the Little Lamont Valley, except for the city of Salem, which uses a much more detailed COSA. I believe, the city of Corvallis uses a little different. They have a different rate for each line of business, so residential, industrial and commercial. But, and theirs was about 5.4% this year. We're asking Benton County for 4.8. I will tell you, because this has come up, in the jurisdictions that have included fuel in the refuse rate, which the Benton County refuse rate does not, that is a very volatile component. And so they had, last year, if you remember, we asked for 4%, but the refuse rate actually said 8.8. We didn't feel that that was the right amount coming out of COVID and we asked for 4%. In the jurisdictions that used fuel, that amount was 13.4%, I think. And we also reduced that for them as well. But because there's such a drastic drop year over year in fuel, the ones that use fuel as a component are at 1% increase for this year. And it's because that year over year drop in fuel prices. But what I will tell you is they have a much more volatile refuse rate. So they have higher highs and lower lows. In Benton County, I can send you a chart. It's, it's very, it's not flat, but it's very predictable at that about 2.9% rate. But yes, the other communities have all approved.
Thank you.
All right. I would second the notion of trying to figure out effective ways to reduce the amount of solid waste that's going into Coffin Butte. I guess one option would be a, a higher rate if you throw away more. Kind of reminds me of electricity rates a few decades ago. You got, if you use more, you got a lower rate. And I think currently most companies, maybe you get a thousand kilowatts at 15 cents a kilowatt. I'm making the numbers up and then, but if you go above a thousand as a household, then you pay more on that. And I think something like that on the solid waste would make sense. I guess I would emphasize the word effective, trying to figure out what actually works to incentivize people to recycle and not get towards a lower amount in, let's actually go into Coffin Butte.
I'll also throw out just a little more information because I haven't had a chance to talk to you about recycling in a while. The, the RMA, the Recycling Modernization Act that goes into effect on July 1st, 2025, we anticipate will really improve what's recycled as well. It's aimed primarily at plastics recycling. And so we've been on hours and hours of meetings with DEQ going over that list of, of what's recyclable. There will be a statewide collection list. Everything that you can recycle in Portland will be able to be recycled in Benton County and John Day and every place else. I think that's a great first step. But we anticipate, because it's an EPR program, an Extended Producer Responsibility Program, that there will be more plastics able to be recycled than we currently have markets for. And that's the really great news. We're excited about that. We are looking forward to that. We know that there are plastics facilities gearing up and that the MRFs, Material Recovery, sorry, we, we speak in all kinds of letters and numbers that nobody knows. But the MRF will be accepting more plastics and sending off some materials for a secondary sort. Republic Services is building a plastics polymer center. Actually, it's open and up and running and we anticipate that some material from Oregon will actually go there to be sorted again and made into a product specifically for a certain customer and it will create some circularity that way. So a lot of really exciting things happen that I think, along with other steps that the county may take, will up the ante for recycling and, and increase that waste reduction number.
All right. Thank you. And I would also agree with the idea of annual adjustments. I, I think that makes sense. When you first started, you threw out some numbers, 7% and 9%, but you didn't say over how many years?
You know, I just went back and looked. So for example, in 2005, the increase was, I have this written down someplace, the increase was about 7%. 2007, it was 8.8. 2009, it was seven again. In 2001, I don't have the 2011 number and 2013 was 9%. So those were a lot higher. And, and then.
That was an annual?
Those were about, those were every other year.
Okay, a two year.
About. I mean, we, we would come in as needed and, but in that time period from 2005 to 2013, it was every two years.
But at this point, talking about this on an annual basis makes sense for you folks?
That's for us.
Just, I, I have a theme of regular relatively modest adjustments rather than waiting and getting sick or shock.
Our customer service folks report that, just anecdotally, that they certainly hear about it a lot less than in the areas where people are getting a big increase all at once.
Okay. Any other questions for Julie?
No, I guess I'll just clarify, you know, I don't want to sound like I want to incentivize making more trash. I just, you know, I suspect things like being able to increase, you know, recycling, what can be recycled will be more impactful than that. I just, you know, want to be mindful about our constituents having to pay more money if it's not going to be impactful and not, no offense, but if we're just giving Republic Services more money and it's not, you know, what's the reason? That's just what I want to be sure about. So, but that's not a, that's not a big enough deal to make me to vote no, so.
And typically, those incentives sort of take from one and give to the others. So it wouldn't be more money to Republic Services. It would be a lesser rate per gallon in a smaller cart than in a larger cart? The ones that I'm aware of, in fact, anyway.
Thank you. And we will now move to public testimony.
Thank you.
Mark Gager. And you have three minutes.
This is your four? I, I think I'll be done in less than three minutes. Mark Gager, good morning, Mark Gager, resident Benton County. First of all, I'd like to request that the public hearing remain open because it sounds like additional information will be coming from Republic Services to the county. I'd like to point out that the packet that was published late on Friday for this meeting contained no new information. So you last had a, had a public hearing on November 28th and then it was continued to this meeting, but no new information was available for the public to review prior to this public hearing. So at the last public hearing, I commented about concerns about the rate complexity. The rate schedule itself is very difficult to understand. I also commended staff for recognizing that the rate structure was such that it incentivized production of more waste. It seems like we might want to be talking about more than just the difference between a 20 gallon cart and a 32 gallon cart. It seems like it's got to be a broader look at the rate structure because I assume that 30, 20 and 32, it really is only talking about residential. We're not talking about commercial and industrial customers. So there was also a little bit of confusion in Director Nichols' presentation. He referred to the expiration of a franchise agreement in 2020. That actually was the landfill franchise agreement. I don't know if this rate index, I don't think it's in the landfill agreement. I think it's in the waste hauling agreement. So there should be some clarification there. And I think maybe Ms. Jackson talked about that. Maybe it was the garbage hauling franchise agreement, which was 2022. So I would urge you to take a broader look at the. So I would urge you to take a broader look at the rate structure, make it less complex for people to understand. The incentivizing people to produce less waste, clearly, there are lots of, there's lots of evidence out there in general that when people have to pay more per unit of whatever material it is, they think harder about that. So I would appreciate the opportunity, again, that if more information like these reports that you're supposed to be getting, if they are part of this process, we should have an opportunity as a public to review those reports. So I would urge the continuation of the public hearing. Thank you for your time.
Next up, March Pop. You have three minutes.
I want to address that issue of discontinuing the perverse incentive for producing more waste by lowering prices on quantities. And of course, that's a really wonderful thing to do. However, as community, as CDD presented it, it would produce more revenue for Republic Services. I didn't understand the point that Ms. Jackson was making, and I think that before we put anything like this into effect, we should have, you know, our own people analyze what it would mean to the revenue stream, and also to make it very clear so that members of the public can understand what's happening. And basically, I'm asking that this be a revenue-neutral process, and that if there is greater revenue generated, that it is used to benefit Benton County residents and not Republic Services. There. I'll bet you that's under 30 seconds.
We have Richard Weber, who's joining us online. Are you?
I think he was interested in testifying in the next hearing.
Oh.
That's correct.
I'm sorry. Do we have any other public testimony at this time? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and the board will deliberate the order.
Be happy to start. I, so the two requests I heard from the community are to continue the public hearing to keep the record open again. And I'm assuming, you know, that that's twofold reason. One, to hear the annual report, and if so, that the public can see the annual report, not just us, with respect to Republic's operations. And the second element is to actually allow for time to address Commissioner Wise's request for information about changing the rate structure to incentivize lower volumes of waste if it's shown to be effective. And I, what I guess I should have asked Julie when you were up at the table, is whether that analysis could be done between now and, say, the January, I think it's 15th, 16th date, or whether, or whether you were suggesting that we approve the rate, the refuse rate index now, and that we work on a changed approach for next year? And I think that that's a decision the board needs to make, whether we want to change now or take a slower approach. I do understand the point that March Pop made, that she doesn't necessarily want to increase the cost of a 32-gallon can and just put more money in Republic's pocket without return to the community, say, reducing the cost of the 20-gallon can instead of increasing the cost of 32-gallon can. That's something that I would want to take into account. And then the point that you made about the fact that large households need larger cans, and sometimes they're the ones that have the most strapped budgets, and therefore it hits them harder in the pocketbook. I don't know how you do that kind of socioeconomic analysis, but it's definitely worth understanding the dynamics, because we don't want to just incentivize waste dumping on the side of the road either.
Correct. And, okay. So to try to answer your questions, I think rates are complex. They are complex, and we work in franchises where they're far more complex than they are here in Benton County. I'm not sure how to make them a lot less complex, but I think that process in and of itself is also complex. So I would really suggest, if you want to take a deep dive into that, we are, as I said, we are 100% willing to look at what the county would like to do with rates and how you'd like to structure them, and if you'd like to subsidize smaller carts with larger carts, all of those things are possible. But I think it's a pretty big lift to get that done, and will take some time, and it isn't me running those numbers. It'll be your financial folks and our financial folks taking a deeper look into that. So I do think that takes a longer time. I will say that the refuse rate and prior to that, the rate adjustments are meant to work with inflation and the rising costs to Republic Services. So I will just say that our preference would be to go forward with the refuse rate index for 2024, and then look and take a real deep dive into how Benton County would like to adjust rates and what you would like to see for, and come back in 2020, at the end of 2024, I guess, with that. And, and, you know, we're perfectly willing to postpone into January, if that's what you'd like to do, to look at the annual report. As you know, what the annual report contains is usually some data about recycling. It has data about household, number of households, and cart sizes, which might be very interesting to look at this year, some other information. But it's, it's basically that kind of information. But the recycling data is interesting, I think, and, and cart sizes are interesting as well. But I think weird things are interesting, so.
I have a question for Commissioner Ogero. You mentioned the annual report, which I'm very interested in seeing as well. Do you feel like that information, like you need that information before you make a decision on this, or is it more about just making sure that it comes to a board meeting and that we publicly discuss it and all that?
I think just in terms of process, we've always seen the annual report before we consider a rate increase, and I would prefer to put the cart behind the horse. And so, just to maintain our process consistency. I do agree that a thorough analysis of rates themselves would take some time, and that to do it correctly and to check for other inconsistencies and weird incentives, we would want to take a deeper look. And I also think that our Sustainable Materials Management Plan analysis should play into it, as should a better understanding of the Recycling Modernization Act. And because all of those things are going to play a role in changing the dynamics of incentives and the waste streams. And I think we need to think carefully about, again, the three waste streams right now, the solid waste going into the landfill, the recyclable material, and the compost. And think about it not only from the perspective of preserving airspace at the landfill for the long term, but also thinking about methane generation, leachate, and the potential toxins from leachate. We need to think about it holistically. It's not just a matter of price or just a matter of greenhouse gases. So that leads me to say that the rate increase analysis, I would like to do it in a more thoughtful manner and be more all-inclusive rather than just reactive at this time. So I guess I'm for the RRI, and I'm for a delay until after we see the annual report and the community can see the annual report.
Okay. That's, thank you. I, I could go either way, so I'm happy to go along with that. I think because this is an annual process, that it sounds like there's two parts here, so we can wait, see the annual report, you know, make a decision for this year, and then in the subsequent year, you know, see how it goes and make more changes at that point, and take into consideration what our SMP processes.
Yeah, what we, what we learn in that process, and how, how we can be most effective in changing the incentive structure and changing it in such a way that we don't create new problems by just shifting from one waste stream to another.
Absolutely.
But do it in the most thoughtful way possible.
So I have a process question. In order to put off this decision today, do we need to actually continue the public hearing, or can we just have it come back on an agenda item that's not a public hearing in the future?
Because this is a notice public hearing, you would have to continue the public hearing to a time and date certain. You could continue it to accept new evidence. You could continue it for deliberations. You could just continue it, yeah, either way. And I just want to reiterate, if you continue it for deliberations, there would be no new evidence submitted, and that would mean the annual report wouldn't be submitted, so that wouldn't make any sense. So you'd want to continue it to accept the annual report, and then it's up to the chair to determine whether if you would wish to receive additional testimony at that time based on the annual report.
So when, when is the annual report due to come out?
It can be available in the, I'm not going to commit myself the week during Christmas, but it can be available the first week in January.
And I think that we already have it on our draft agenda for January 16th.
I think we do.
And Rachel's not here. Amanda is in the back of the room. She might know. I don't have the draft agenda in front of me, but that's my recollection. So we could continue this hearing for date certain to January 16th, and accept the new information available at that time, and then proceed with deliberation.
Yeah, I just want to just clarify that if you already have an agenda item pending to receive and review the annual report on the 16th, that is one item. The continuation of this hearing would also have to include introduction and acceptance of that annual report, otherwise it's kind of being put into the wrong bin, if you will. So we just want to make sure that's-
That agenda's still flexible. We can change the agenda too, so that the presentation of the annual report occurs during that continuation of the public hearing, if that's a more effective way to do it.
Yeah, I, you might want to do some thought to that. I have no idea what else goes into that presentation beyond what is germane to the, to the refuse rate here, but my-
Yeah, we can figure it out.
The idea is to continue this public hearing so we can review the annual report and do this as our January 16, 2024 board meeting.
At 11 o'clock.
Or later.
And can I ask a question? Just to clarify, I think we're happy to put together some information about incentives and smaller cart sizes, but I would prefer to do that as a separate issue and not muddy the waters with this, if that works.
Sounds very reasonable.
Good. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
So do we need to make a motion?
No, the chair makes, makes a statement, and I think his statement two minutes ago was sufficient, and you did capture that, did you not, Erica?
Next up, public hearing number three. And that's to reconvene our, in December 5, 2023, hearing regarding amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 9. Thank you. So I'll invite staff who's already here, Tommy Douglas, to start us off, and you need to turn your mic on.
Can I just pipe in for, just to make sure that we clarify the procedural stance of this hearing? We accepted public testimony on the 5th. We received evidence, and it, we closed the record there to testimony and evidence. So we received over this past week several emails. Those are not included in the packet. They are not included in the record of this hearing because we closed the record. The purpose of the continuation today was to verify that the changes directed by the board at the public hearing have in fact been incorporated into the ordinance. So at this point, the procedural stance is to review the red line and to deliberate. There is, there's no, we've closed the public testimony portion. On that topic, I want to clarify, in your packet, you will see on page, I'm looking at page 70, which is Exhibit A to the ordinance. That is an incorrect red line. If you look to page 77 of your packet, we have corrected the incorrect strike-throughs. And what you see beginning on page 77, running through page 80, is the red line version that would attach to the ordinance that is correct. Have I got that?
You got that right. Yes, there is some process documentation in the agenda, so you can see the process we went through. But we did do the side-by-side. Thank you, Amanda. That was very helpful. And the right version is the red line that we've been circulating. I have a separate printed copy, if you want to look at it on its own. But that should track all of the changes that we have discussed in hearings and should be ready to go.
All right. Thank you, Vance, for getting this straightened out here. And so we close the public hearing, December 5th, and now we are looking at page 77, 78, 79, and 80. And that is the final corrected version.
And again, I want to reiterate that the final corrected version on 77 through 80 reflects the direction that the board gave staff at the last hearing. It is not new. It is not new information. It just is, pulls together what we hope is the final corrected version based on testimony, evidence in your direction.
And there was some confusion in our packet last time, what the correct version was, and now we have it before us.
Knock on wood.
I appreciate that. We've worked this over quite a bit.
Okay, so deliberation?
Yes.
I appreciate the fact that the record is closed, but we have received correspondence. And so in terms of deliberation, I am definitely open to including- And so in terms of deliberation, I am definitely open to including the word "only" in 9.8102D, so that the community.
What page?
On page 79. Bottom of page 79, in blue. So that last paragraph on the right side of the page would read, "Community rodeos conforming to NPR, Northwest Professional Rodeo Association Animal Welfare Rules and FFA-sponsored events. This exemption applies to activities use, only using animals not listed in 9.8054." And that's the only change I would recommend. Other than that, I am ready to rock and roll.
Vance, how does that change the meaning of that section D?
It's, it's, it, it limits the, these events to anything except those animals not listed.
Animals listed.
In 054. Because what you're saying, using only animals not listed, using only this group, not this group. So it's, it's a funky, honestly, it's a funky grammatical addition. I know what's trying to happen.
It just tightens it. It just is, from a legal standpoint, from what I understand, it's just a clearer, brighter line.
I would prefer to leave it alone.
I, yeah, I also understand the intent, but I feel like it just complicates it, and I prefer to leave it how it is as well.
I guess I outnumbered.
Well, and I, again, you know, if anyone ever questions how we're interpreting this ordinance, we have plenty of stuff on the record of how we are interpreting this and what our intent is with this ordinance. So I really, I don't think it'll be an issue.
Okay. I would agree with that. We've worked this over a lot, and we finally have a clean version, and I would prefer to proceed with that. So any other thoughts?
Only to say thank you to everyone who participated in this process. It's been long and arduous, and I just want to thank everyone for their time, effort.
I'm happy to make a motion. I move to enact ordinance number 2023-03, yeah, 0322, and conduct a first reading.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Nay.
So we have two ayes and one nay.
Two nays.
Two nays.
That's not what I intended, that's for sure. I would like to see this go forward. I'm only preferring to amend that one word. Then we start all over.
So the motion that was proposed, seconded, has failed, so we are back where we were five minutes ago.
I would propose that we accept this red line with the addition of the word "only" in Section 9.8102D.
Would you repeat that?
I would propose that we accept the red line version that's in front of us with the addition of the word "only" in that clause, 9.8102D.
There's a motion on the table, but can I ask a question, a process question?
Sure.
So considering that that addition came after we closed the record, are we, you know, is it an ex parte contact? Are we, you know, I?
No. Anytime any of the board member wishes to make a motion, it can include an amendment, a change, an alteration to the subject that you're considering for the motion.
Okay. I will second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And I'm opposed. I'm opposed. Motion carries.
So Erica, I want to, I want to clarify that the word "only" goes into subsection D, second sentence, after the word "using," and before the word "animals." So, sure, sure. Subsection D on page 79, second sentence, the word "only" is to be inserted in between the word "using" and the word "animals." And I will conduct the first reading, if you're ready.
Yes.
For the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of amending Benton County Code, Chapter 9, Ordinance Number 2023-0322, Benton County Board of Commissioners hereby ordains as follows. Now, therefore, the Board of Commissioners ordain as follows. Short title, this ordinance shall be known as Amendment to Benton County Code, Chapter 9. The second reading will take place, how, do we have room on the agenda for the 3rd of January?
Second.
It's a second? We do. So the second reading will take place on January 2nd. It's a regular old business item. It is not a portion of a public hearing. And the ordinance will then take place 30 days thereafter, which would be February 1st.
So do those dates need to be corrected in the resolution itself?
You mean the ordinance?
Ordinance, yeah.
So Amanda, could you correct the dates in the ordinance? Thank you.
Do you want to repeat the dates?
Sure. So the second reading will take place at the board meeting on January 2nd. The effective date of the ordinance will be 30 days from that date, which will be February 1st.
Great. Thank you. All right, I will close the public hearing, resume our regular board meeting. Do we have any other business to take care of at this time? Meeting adjourned.